Two hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Chicago Petroleum for fuel is five thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Faulkner Pipe Company for supplies is one thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Southern Lab Company for testing, two thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. David's Fire Equipment for equipment, one thousand twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Consolidated Electric, work on the Alma Street well, is three thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and forty cents. Arkansas Municipal League for the Service Charge of Annual Premium, is four thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Craft Beaching Company for the audit was an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. South Arden Business Solutions for a new copier, is one thousand five, five thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Two-Clack County for bookkeeping services, nineteen hundred and eight dollars. Get Rid of it for gar, commercial garbage, was six thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars. And Get Rid of it for the residential garbage, was fifteen thousand sixty-seven dollars. For a total of fifty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Yeah, no, it was, it was gone for free. I wouldn't even, um, make the copies. It had lines through them. Plus it was so empty. The man said he didn't have any more parts for it.
And the audit, was that one that we're going to go over now?
No, that's the water two hours.
We'll be getting rid of it on the commercial, this week from last month.
Pretty close to the same thing.
Two thousand nine hundred twenty-six, and last had, uh, six thousand nine hundred and forty. He was not signing that.
Did they add any new beams?
I don't know, I haven't seen that big.
Was there any new beams?
Residential, Get Rid of it, clean up a little bit. Did they add some new residential commercials?
They changed the pickup on one business, and they added another. They added another, uh, beam to, to another business. So that's why.
What one did they add?
They added one to, um, Mr. Branch Building. That's there, he can bounce, started keeping the good parts, he combined them, and got one, one roll-off.
One full yard, not a roll-off, one about, about a full yard.
Yeah, so, all the different, all his three, his different businesses can put trash in one roll-off and start having two, two at one, two little beaded roll-offs at one and two at the other.
So he would be billed for that difference in the two?
Yes, it's already been changed.
Okay, alright.
Did, did they, did anybody, did they speak of doing it? On one day pickup or week?
No, they haven't said anything about that yet. Or do it, excuse me, instead of doing it on what, Tuesday, Wednesday, just trying to do it on one day? No, they haven't told us anything about it. They haven't spoken to Scott Beach and everybody, so he hasn't said anything.
Yeah, my commercial.
Oh, you're talking about residential, aren't you?
I'm talking about residential.
Okay, yeah.
How come they picked up a one-day residential?
No, they got two.
I mean, I'm talking about a commercial.
Oh, you got one-day commercial.
Okay, moving on to the financial statements of the month of October. We turned up to the general funds, any questions? The general funds took in a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents. We collected a franchise, twenty-three thousand, that was franchise tag. Uh, incurred expenses of ninety-eight thousand four hundred and two dollars and ten cents. For a net income of twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Street funds, three funds took in eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Had operating expenses of twenty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty cents. For an eight thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty-six cent loss. Looking like.
A particular reason for that loss?
Yeah, that looks like, uh... We had some. The Arkansas Ag Company was twenty-two hundred eighty-five dollars this month. The Lard Products was seventeen hundred eighty-six dollars, and Wayne Edward over the Fairview, a thousand and sixty dollars. They added up to that, unusual stuff. Water funds. Water funds took in twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. Had operating, cash operating expenses of sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. For an operating income of eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. And we had depreciation for the month of October of four thousand forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. For a net income for the month of four thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
But the physical income is going to be?
Our operating income, net income, was eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. Before depreciation. Sewer's fund, took in forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. And incurred expenses of thirty-five thousand four hundred and six dollars even. For our operating income of fourteen thousand thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. We had depreciation of seven thousand twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. For a net income for the month of seven thousand nine dollars and ten cents. Net change in the month of September, street funds.
The street fund is pretty big, I'll turn back, turn back, just not that much.
As y'all are aware, they issued the, uh, report to the Arkansas Legislative Joint Audit Committee for the month of, for the year of two thousand and twelve. And by law, we are required to report that at the first meeting after receipt of the report. So we elected to go ahead and do that tonight, uh, to be compliant. You'll turn to your, like, the third page in your yellow reports. It's a letter from the Legislative Joint Audit Committee called the Finance on Compliance Report. And I will read this letter, this entire piece of, if you understand. To the City of Dartmouth, Arkansas officials, council members, Joint Legislative Audit Committee. The priority of the Division of Legislative Audit is to assist local government officials by promoting sound financial management and accountability of government resources. The Legislative Auditor reports on the official affairs of the local governments as well to compliance and relevant state laws and observance of good business practices to provide accountability for tax dollars expended to support government operations. We have performed certain limited procedures with respect to the cash basis financial information in compliance with certain state laws and accepting accounting practices to the City of Dartmouth, Arkansas. As of and for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. And have issued our report therein, their own, dated July tenth, two thousand and fourteen. These procedures were, were not performed for the water and sewer audit system and the nursing home. Management of the city is responsible for maintaining the financial records and complying with state laws and accepting accounting practices. The findings contained in this section relate to the following officials who held office during two thousand and twelve. Mayor Floyd Gray, Clerk Felicia Grayson, who resigned in January of two thousand and twelve. Fay Kennedy, who was terminated February thirteenth of two thousand and twelve. District Court Clerk Hope Whitten, Police Chief Eric Evans. We evaluated the city's compliance with certain state laws concerning general and district court counting, budgeting, purchasing, and investing in depositing public funds. Noncompliant with state law and public accounting practices were noted to the above office. For the mayor slash clerk, review of receipts issued during the period January first of two thousand and twelve through April twenty-ninth of two thousand and fourteen, revealed the following in the general and street funds. The receipts exceeded bank account deposits by five hundred and ninety dollars. Receipts issued in two thousand and twelve told to six hundred and six dollars were not deposited in the civil bank accounts until April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Cash count deducted on August, excuse me, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, revealed unaccounted-for funds told to forty dollars, which were reimbursed by Office Manager Keisha Ellis on May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The police chief, bank accounts were not reconciled at the end of each month. It's noncompliant with Arkansas Southern Antidote sixteen ten two oh seven. The balance remaining in the bank account was not identified with receipts issued and did not yet enter on the arrest report in compliance with Arkansas Code Antidote sixteen ten two oh seven. For the district court clerk, bank reconciliations for the district court fund, city and civil bank accounts again were not reconciled to the receipts of this person's journal due to posting errors in compliance with Arkansas Code Antidote sixteen ten two oh nine. The balances in the district fund, district court fund, city, county, and civil bank accounts again were not identified with receipts issued for cases not yet adjudicated, and the payments made on them on all unpaid time payment accounts if required by Arkansas Southern Antidote sixteen ten two oh nine.
Now, tell us what you just said.
That means, um, the bank, well, first of all, bank accounts were not reconciled these months. And they were not identified with receipts. So, for cases that are not coming to court yet, they're not reconciled. There's no reconciliation between what's being put in the bank and what is not going.
There's no reconciliation between what, deposit?
Bank accounts were not identified with receipts issued for cases not yet adjudicated.
Okay, so how do you do that?
Well, I didn't know whether any receipt you get for cases adjudicated.
I didn't know.
So then you go to court and you're assessed a fine, you pay your fine.
Yeah.
You can't collect a fine before you go to court.
It's a fact, so.
That's what this is saying. That's the way I read it.
Well, it, it, it's not saying that they're collecting it, they're not writing the receipt.
It says, "Bank accounts again were not identified." With receipts issued for cases not yet adjudicated. Well, you have not been adjudicated yet, you have not been issued a fine yet. So that, I don't know what you're talking about.
We've had problems with that since I couldn't remember. And I don't understand, you know, at all, but anyway.
But that was more than fine.
But otherwise, before you go to court, and before you get the fine, they want you to identify it in the bank.
The bank account.
You can speak to that.
I can do that. I mean, the only way you could do that, the bank, it would be, you would have to write down your receipt. Yeah. It's all your, the notice letter, and so-and-so was fined, so-and-so not paid, and then bring forth a zero.
I know, I know that they have time, time payment arrangement for something.
And so, see, that's the only way you could do it. But there wouldn't be any, there would not be any monies there in the total. It would just be a name and the amount that they were buying back.
That's right. I, I, I think, I think we're talking about cases where fine has been assessed. It hasn't been paid because they're paying it out.
Well, it says the balances in the district court fund. So the balance in the bank accounts were not identified.
Okay, so we got A, B, and C paying fines. And A is fined five hundred dollars and pays a hundred. And it wasn't identified on the deposit slip that it was A. So they want to know, hey.
I guess so.
Well, they, uh...
Only, only the deposit slip, they want to know if Curtis got fined, I got a fine. They don't want to know how much you paid. Anybody want to know how much I paid, how much you paid.
Can I will tell you that, uh, of all of their deposit slips, there's a name by every line.
Is there? That's not what that says.
Well, I know, but that's the way this, when I miss Albert's, we're separate from.
The district court. Alright, so, I think what you could do, and correct me, and I'm interested, Mr. Fly, I was sort of in my... Uh, what you could do, Mr. Fly, is you could go through internal records of the court clerk and find out who paid what, because they got ledger there, only find, right?
Yeah, they keep a ledger.
Ah.
Well, I was wrong before.
Just as long as nobody's going south with the money, that is what.
But honestly, I don't believe so much, but I think you shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, you're right.
Bank accounts, that's what bothers you a lot. We've offered to teach them how to do that.
Well, I.
See, when you might hit the court clerk, bank accounts.
I had a set down with the court clerk, and she is supposed to, to reconcile that.
Yeah, I think that, that wasn't the reason they were.
Yes, you were.
I thought that was the reason.
A set down, please. Because it sounds worse than it is. It sounds not good.
Yeah, they're not saying any money missing, dude. They're just saying. Right, so, I don't like the City of Dartmouth, especially the court, to be, uh, building. You know, that, that tags been on there, most of two thousand and eight, since I came on, it's tagged in on.
But did, did he tend to come down, or did he begin to come and explain that Dartmouth stuff? It was, uh, I didn't remember all of it.
Well, he explained, he's one of us, when he gets ready to exit.
Yes.
He explained to mayor, he explained to the city clerk, he explains it to the judge, and he explains it to the, uh, the police chief. So, he explained everything to everybody before he leave, in his exit statement. So, everybody was aware of that.
But that's easy, I mean, that's easy to correct. It's been minutes and months.
Okay.
If you have this.
Thank you, man.
Continue on.
Yeah.
This report is intended solely for the information and use of the Legislative Joint Audit Committee, local city government, state executive, and oversight management, other parties as required to Arkansas Code. It is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than those specific parties. However, pursuant to Arkansas Code N of ten four four seventeen, all reports presented to the Legislative Joint Audit Committee are matter of public record and distribution and not limited. Division of Legislative Audit, Roger Norman, Legislative Audit, dated July tenth, two thousand and fourteen. That is your report for two thousand and fourteen. I also have here is a letter.
David, uh, is this still dealing with that? Okay, so we want to make motion for that.
Well, I'm going to read this letter.
Okay.
And I, I'm sure it's part of my address. This is a letter from the Legislative Joint Audit Committee dated November sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Honorable Thomas Dean, prosecuting attorney, T. S. Judicial District, Iowa six, Main Street, Martha, Arkansas. Dear Mr. Dean, pursuant to Arkansas Code Antidote ten four four nineteen, twenty-one two seven oh eight, we hereby notify you of the following information disclosed in our reports of the City of Dartmouth to the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Clerk slash mayor.
What's that, special number?
Uh, ten four four nineteen, and twenty-one two seven oh eight.
Thank you.
Review of the receipts issued during the period Ju, January first, two thousand and twelve through April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, revealed the following for the general street fund. And Lord, you don't know the digits on the second one. Receipts exceeded bank deposits, bank account deposits by five hundred and ninety dollars. Receipts issued during, in two thousand and twelve, told to six hundred and six dollars were not deposited in the city bank account until April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Cash count inducted on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, revealed unaccounted-for funds told to forty dollars, which were reimbursed by Office Manager Keisha Ellis on May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The enclosed report will be presented to the Standing Committee on Counties and Municipalities at its November twelfth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. At which time, the report will be public information and available on our website, www dot Arkansas Audit dot com. Division of Legislative Audit, Roger Norman, Legislative Audit.
Thank you, good evening, sir. Alright, now, something happened in April? How, how late, what was it?
Well, that's when he was doing the audit. Let me say this, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not saying. All I'm saying is, if you remember, I just read where we had a shift in office managers in January of two thousand and twelve. Um, at that time, there was shoeboxes of money that was found under the cabinet in there that was undeposited. It was deposited at that time.
It's somebody else's bankers.
This goes on for a year and a half, and we don't know exactly when these undeposited funds occurred.
Okay, so, the officers know that, just yet.
Yes, he found out.
But they didn't say it?
They sent her a letter, answered a paper.
Law, it is undiscovered, undeposited funds. And it had to be written, but it was there.
It was there. That's what this council, uh...
The money was there, we just had to, just had to talk.
Well, was there a chance, and it was probably, still, they didn't get it?
Oh, we found lots of chips.
Yeah.
That's from, from, you found deals that was two or three months old. They found, mm.
Sure did.
We called, the Legislative Audit was called at that time, and then they come in and get it. And there was some, somebody at this time, and then they just, and they just closed it. Because he didn't have a ticket. It was in a chicken.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, this goes back to shift.
And most of this go back to, before this came.
And I'm not saying this happened before or after, we don't know.
Five, what you found?
Fifteen-month spread here, we don't know. It told with five hundred and ninety dollars.
Answered a paper, babe.
Plus forty. Been refunded, it's been deposited, it's taken. Okay, questions?
Sure that this has been noted in the minutes, because that's what we're, we'll be looking for when you come down. And just like to make this comment, thank you, Mr. Fly, that we do use the Legislative Audit to come down. There is anything wrong, they catch it. Those are the same people that's going to prosecute, uh, refer whatever wrongdoing that's going on to the prosecuting attorney. So, we don't hire anybody except for the water sewer. Come in because they don't do water sewer audits, so. Everything has been reconciled, so, y'all heard the report, we've done it. So it's got to be noted in the minutes that we did present this report, and that you all heard, and lead to be a motion to that effect.
Mr. Fly, if you could, if you can, say the title.
Oh. Move that we accept the Legislative Joint Audit Report? Let's do it separately, let's do, do that first, we want to do it like that?
In this motion, that's, that's certainly managed correct.
Okay, is it moved, maybe we get a second?
Do we, do we question?
Yes, yes, it is. Okay, removed in private second, and we accept the legislative one as presented by Mr. Fly. Any discussion on the motion? Now, let us vote, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay, ayes had, motion carries.
Now the motion prevails. I miss.
So move that we approve the bill, the amount. It's been moved in private second that we approve the bill over a one thousand dollars from minutes of the last meeting, financial statements, in the minutes. Any discussion? Now the vote, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay, ayes had, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on here. Next thing we got down is the mayor's comment. All I got to say, this particular moment, is congratulations to all those, uh, candidates that, uh, won reelection, uh, and, uh, those that still has not been decided, we wish all you luck on your reelection. Okay.
Mayor, can I make a, I mean, a bond order?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we've got a fire station that we're working through rural development on, in finance. Those was running the paper about ten days ago. And any of you here tonight about that bond order, you got third days to protest after we pass the ordinance authorizing the bond. It's my recommendation, Mayor, that we not adjourn tonight, but we continue this meeting tomorrow. And as this time passed, for the single purpose of passing that.
My goodness.
Oh, my goodness. Well, you can do it on Thursday if you want to.
I'm with you.
Alright, we, we want to turn, we'll just go into Wednesday at eleven o'clock. Pass that on. We got to do this, gentlemen, ladies.
So how would we attend?
Well, you just want to. Eleven o'clock, uh, this morning, before the, and actually passing it. Thirty days to, for protests. And let me tell you a horror story on this bond, right? About fifteen years ago, right, they passed a bond ordinance in the City of Fayetteville, Incinerator. How many millions of dollars was it? Oh, what, maybe twenty million? They passed ordinance, voted the money, collected, and incinerated on a ship coming from Norway. And some protester found out they didn't touch all the dots, and turned that boat around. And it cost a pile of money. So, and I say, we're going not to adjourn, we're going into Wednesday to pass that bond ordinance, be right, because I want to turn that boat around.
So, let be noted, councilors, that, uh, there will be a special call, council meeting on Wednesday at eleven o'clock.
It will be a continuation of this meeting tonight.
Anybody else have any conflict on that particular day, besides Miss Counselor Morris? Okay, if not, we, we'll hear, then that's, doesn't have to be a form of motion or anything like that, just, uh...
Just do not adjourn tonight. Reconvene you.
Own business. New business. The five reports. Okay, then we're down to our ultimate report. We have a lot of talking back in the back, back there, that we wish everybody were well. If you got a comment to make, if you need to, take a moment to make a comment.
During my police department month activity for, for the month of October, two thousand fourteen. There were total of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, thirty-nine cents collected by courts for county and municipal. There were total of four one arrests for the month, there were total of six hundred and twenty-four pain through police fire hotline. We had four hazard arrests, three dinner guy, one drug arrest, six sudden arrests, fourteen criminal arrests, thirteen radar arrests, fifteen warrants and summon service, thirty-seven disturbing calls, three accident medications, eleven complaints, eighteen hours of municipal court, uh, sixteen hours training, twenty-two other, that's our situation. Any question?
Now, there's more now, three.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Go.
Okay. Board one, representing, we have councilperson Karen Isra and councilperson Bailey Morris. Councilperson Graham. Yeah, the road, the new road there, yeah, they're waiting, uh, just, when they get the, uh, jackhammer again, they got two, they're gonna do it, they're gonna do that, at that particular time, they got some work they're gonna do at the sewer plant also, so we're just waiting, you jackhammer one tank up at the rim. Okay, war two, we have councilperson Emily Esters and councilperson, uh, Ms. Gooden Stevenson. For representing war three, we have councilperson Charles Higrade and councilperson Jan Higrade, and report from.
The only way I know is, I know I met him this season, it's open, but there's still quite a few streets that has been skipped, and they need more. There's no point in leaving all those leaves at that, at the cross street, there are people who can hold them.
Okay, I think we still have got Dwayne and, uh, Scotty.
And this is along the side of the streets.
Okay, you're talking about something that need, needs sidearm, or get it done with, just break the bush off, sidearm, sidearm work?
You still got a lot of gray on the side of the streets.
Mr. Wade, Scotty, you make note of that. Okay. All right. We have any zoning? All right, we're going to public comment, and public comment.
Yes, sir. Hello, mayor, how are you?
I'm doing fine, and Ms. Lee, how you doing?
I'm doing wonderful, best. Uh, on October fifteenth, we had a, uh, shootout on Main, two hundred, the two hundred block of Main. Um, it was six gunfire, from what the police officer told me. Uh, what happened, I wasn't there, uh, my husband's in the hospital, and I was staying overnight with him. And the, it was a forty-five caliber that ran through my house. The, the shooting started out there at the club and ended on the two hundred block of Main. Uh, if somebody would have been there, somebody would have died instantly from the forty-five cap, that was, it was found in my grandbaby's mouth. My one-year-old grandbaby's mouth. Mayor, I talked to you about it, I've been patiently waiting and waiting and hold, and just praying that some, somebody can give me some answers. So I waited, so they wouldn't say that I was doing anything wrong, I went to the police department, uh, Friday. I called before I came, I went there, I was very upset. They told me it was an investigation. Well, it was, the shooting was Sunday morning on October the twelfth. The investigation didn't start until October fifteenth, Wednesday, three days later, mayor, I spoke to you in the bar shop about it. Three days later, the investigation started. And I'm trying, I, I'm trying to find the answers, what happened, when the call came in, when the two officer, the first officer came there, he said, oh, it's probably from the incident that happened, that's seen up Sunday. I'm saying, well, I wasn't here, I thought that it just happened. He said, no, that happened Sunday. I'm, I'm gonna be three minutes, so then Wednesday, when they came there, that all particular officer left. Officer Esters and Chief Evans came. We went to take down the wall to try and find the bullet, because it went through two double walls, it traveled that floor and dropped down. And so, um, they kept looking for the bullet, I said, y'all, how do it look? They said it's gonna be something small, I said, well, something was in my grandbaby mouth, Sunday night, because I picked up my grandkids, Olivia's baby, Sunday night. It happens early Sunday morning, I picked up my grandkids Sunday night, when I got home Sunday night, she had something in her mouth, you know Ikea's true thing, and I grabbed it out, so I called the ER room, so they can transfer me to ICU, I said, John, what is it? You love a bullet, he said, sit here, I ain't got no gun like that. Found out, when they got there Wednesday, that was it, that was in my grandbaby's mouth. My grandbaby had to go to church, she had, ha, all kind of affection had broke out from the bullet. My thing is this, when I got the report Friday, Friday, when I went in there, it was like this, and I'm holding up, if I'm, and I know that Charles, Mr. Charles sitting is real smart, and I know he know the law. And I'm gonna leave it like that, but this is legal document, you can't cross no, out nothing with a black marker. And so I held up to the light, because I wanted to know what they gave me, and when I approached the guy, the police officer, when I get, when he gave me this, he said, let me tell you something, if you ain't run around trying to investigate, yeah, I was doing my own investigation, it was my house got shot, and that's my grandbaby. So, it went from there, and he told me he was a man, but guess what, I said what I had to say, mayor. My thing is this, on this legal document, stat- statue, five twenty-four, city ordinance, discharge of firearm in city limit. So I went back and got my handbook here. Statue five dash seventy-four dash one oh seven, it reads unlawful discharge of a firearm from a vehicle. B one, a person that commits unlawful discharge of a firearm from a vehicle in a second degree, if he recklessly discharge a firearm from a vehicle in a manner that creates a substantial risk of physical injury to another person or property damage to a home, residence, or other occupo- occupal structure. The forty-five hit my house, went through it. Went in my grandchild, one-year-old, she even one-year-old, went in her mouth. So how in the hell, excuse me, mayor, did they got to be a misdemeanor? Hold up. The case, want, attempt, or complete, check my, complete, misdemeanor felony, misdemeanor. City ordinance. Thank you.
Did they find out who did it?
All right.
Well, uh, ch, uh, Mr. Uh, city attorney, I started, let me end it. Uh, the person that called in was Rose Webber, almost threesome the one, she called in, Officer Webber, she did call in to Bill at, at the police station. Bill said he didn't hear no gun, no gunfire, it was six shots. I talked to my neighbors and everybody kind of got together, and they told me who I need to talk to, I called Brown's nephew. The police nephew, and this is what he, his words was. I was behind the person that was doing the shoot. But I ain't telling you no hope. I said, why you didn't report it? I ain't got nothing to do with it. I called Ham. Yeah, I told them to put the guns down and get from out here to my club. Ham said they had already left his club. They all had left, everybody had left. And I, I said, Ham, who had the gun? He said Milton, Brown's nephew, had the big gun shooting up in the air, and he, I said, Ham, did you tell him to stop? He told me that's what you do when you get high, you shoot. Okay, I said, Ham, what about the boys from Monticello? This is what he told me, he said, I told both of them to leave, to leave his club, and he, he told them to leave, and he did right, he told them to leave. When they got the dirt, dirt on my, it was a rail fire, it was six gunshot, Rose Webber said it was six gunshot, back and forth, back and forth, they were shooting. She seen a white vehicle SUV and a, a small dark car. She told Bill that when she called the police station. That's when Brown came out, one of my neighbors said, he, he talked to Brown, he did the spot check, the, uh, spotlight, whatever check.
Ain't nobody talking to me that night.
That's what my neighbor, okay.
He talked to me the next morning.
He talked to you the next morning, but my thing, your nephew said he was behind the people that was doing the shoot. Why he did not call in, we could have called him from Monticello, from that stop sign in Monticello, you could have had him.
I answered the same question.
Oh, you asked, you telling me a forty, you know what a forty-five caliber do, do you know, it wasn't your house. It wasn't your house, that's why you're not concerned.
Well, I'm not gonna debate you.
Mr. Gray, it could have been your house, Mr. Gray, it could have been in the one of y'all house.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right.
Case ready, you said your, you said your nephew, you did, you asked him the same thing, why you didn't tell?
First of all, I'm not gonna argue, y'all.
You can't argue me, it's on camera.
Just one minute, okay, um. We're gonna let this, this meeting get out of hand. We're gonna let, Officer Brown, we give you whatever time.
Well, I, I only got to say, mayor. We got, we got a call at, apartment three four, three.
Three forty-five.
Three forty-five that morning.
And mayor.
The call, the call says, I interrupted you.
Okay.
The call said, we got shots fired on Main and Shaw. At, by the time, we got the call to the police station, I got a call on my personal phone, from my house, that somebody shooting out in front of the house. And, uh, I came to Main Street, I went toward Monroe, up the highway, with my spotlight, I didn't see anybody out, and I, I circled a whole neighborhood. I wonder where our house been hit until.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. Nobody in the neighborhood, uh, said their house was hit. My, the people across the street in my neighborhood, they just heard the shots lately, and he kept saying it sounded like it came from the foreway. That way, everybody kept, it was shot, shot, that it came from the foreway, and somebody said it was dark color building, but it went toward the Monticello. But I go into the county line, I didn't see anybody.
Mayor, excuse me again, my thing, he just hit up here in public and on camera, said that he, his nephew, he don't know why his nephew didn't report it. Well, guess what, if I see somebody robbing your house or killing you, by law, I supposed to report it. So all I need to know, where do I go from here, mayor? I got a police report that says, the person that told me Friday, that is not finished, but on here it says it's complete, then it's darked out, but it says it's a, a city ordinance. So I'm confused with the state law and the city ordinance. Charles, Mr. Sidney, can you explain that, please?
I need to call Captain Evans, he's one of the, 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 in that case.
But why would you, anybody know state official paper, I'm not saying you, state official paper, you don't use a black marker to cross out something. You telling me that you hiding something. That's what you telling me, you hiding something. It's crossed out in black.
All right, we're gonna let, uh, city attorney make an answer here, then we're gonna move on with our public comment section.
He can't answer that one. The hell you talking about, you, first of all, don't disrespect me. I ain't nobody no joke.
Okay, everybody, just cool down. Officer Brown, just cool down. We're gonna move on, any other public comment?
I'm gonna get a copy of this. Okay, thank you. The municipal ordinance is for, uh, city attorney and our ward, he was Graham and Ms. Bailey Morris. I can read all this ordinance, and you have a word in here, in, in denovo. City attorney, can you tell me what the denovo means?
Only, when, when, when one court reviews another court's decision, they look at, in the entire record, and that looks at the entire record. Give me the context.
Love it, okay, it was in this, in this particular phrase, um, it's, it's, uh, go back to line one, the court, the municipal court shall make a devo, determination in the existence of a nuisance.
Denovo, that means on its own, on the.
I know. But it all, I can read all the whole thing, and then the denovo, well, it's, well, the way it's been in here. It's of refresh, a new beginning, enhances a Latin term to start the thing all over.
Yes, that's right.
That's right, so why, in, in ordinance, there's a clear ordinance, why don't you have a devo, a devo, denovo in there, when it essentially means that every time a complaint is filed, that it starts all over?
No, no, that's not what it means. Sometimes there's administrative proceeding before a court gets involved, and the court is not bound by this administrative disposition. It looks at the entire record for years.
Okay, I understand that, and if each complaint is considered, jurisdiction safe. So why would that be there, if we have a, a ordinance set in place, all the, the determination on what a nuisance is?
Well, it's like, it's like this, if you've got a speed warning sign that says, don't go too fast, is that thirty-five, forty-five, fifty-five, or sixty-five? So, that's why laws have to have some definition to it. And when, when you, when you prohibit certain activity, you need to give notice of what prohibited by given parameters of what's not allowed. And in each case, where you don't have parameters in the law, every case is considered fresh and new. What might be too much in one instance is not, not too much in another, pollution, dust, or steam, or whatever.
And that's, that's why when you have a ordinance, it's so confusing when you take that stand to say that, okay, what's considered a help, what's considered a hazard, what's considered damage to personal property and health? When the court say that, when the ordinance case is stand, when they can remove that over into another situation, even though it's the same situation by one word, saying that, okay, help hazard, what's considered a help hazard for the court may not be considered a help hazard to somebody else, and what, so what's a public help hazard, the court might not consider. And, and that's what I'm saying, if he's ordinance, that, that is where the issue is at, and you have, this is ordinance, still or municipal court ordinance. That's what, this is what is coming out of it. And when we're having the same situation, where we complain about a thing, and then it keeps getting stagnated at this, the, the denovo rule. Where even though.
Denovo would be in favor of people complaining about conditions, it wouldn't be in favor of the blue. Because every case is different.
Okay, and it's, uh, yeah, well, section, N nineteen dash A N N, which the, the little strip will mean.
And the same section.
Nineteen dash twenty-three, twenty-five, I didn't find that anywhere, I, I, I didn't find that. That order anywhere in the book.
Did you read the ordinance or statute?
I'm reading statute on that.
Okay. Any other public comment?
That one gentleman back there.
Okay, I think, Mr. Phil?
Man is about to, uh, amelie service. My wife, uh, sometimes her blood pressure just goes up sky high, and she called him. Over hours, nobody come, and I can't, I got, so I can't see at night. So, we was in a situation, I had to put on some old glasses, trying to feel my weight to the hospital. The second time, call, nobody come. I, and, and the other complaints I got against him, I went by there one day, just walking, it smelled pitiful. I, and, and the other companies I got against him, I went by there one day, just walking. It smelled pitiful. If you don't believe, y'all go by it. Somebody need to do some cleaning up. It smell, it's, huh, I ain't tell you, it was tough. But you supposed to get in there, ambulance service, and go wherever they're gonna take you. Somebody need to clean that place up. Yeah, you don't know what I'm talking about. Y'all go better than you'll see. Put them down, man. You gotta take my wood.
Smell all you want, man.
Go by there. With you. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna move on, alright.
Right, I got a question to ask you. Uh, is our water safe to drink? Has it been tested by the state?
Yes. We just sent a CCR report out, it's in the paper, we told you on the back of the water bill to look at it. And yes, the water's always tested by state.
And, uh, are our city clerk a part-time position?
No.
It's not?
No, city clerk's a part-time position.
Part-time? Is that considered a bookkeeper position?
Our bookkeeper is Mr. Fly. He's contracted.
Is, is the city clerk?
Got to be two feet for a non-professional. So that's why Mr. Fly. The city council passed that a couple of weeks ago. Very good move. You get, you get monster report down to the, down to the pin.
Okay, but I thought that was, uh, the city clerk job.
It would have been a hundred years ago, but it's not now. Too, too much to it.
Now, city clerk is Miss Kennedy.
Right.
Alright, and it's a part-time position. Uh, and most of the little small municipalities, they village, city clerk is a part-time position. Also, most of the small towns, city clerk, they differentiate the two duties of city clerk and office manager. So right now, we have city clerk here, and office manager is Ms. Uh, Ms. Ellis. Okay?
I got, I got one issue, but...
Alright, we're gonna hit, we're gonna, we're gonna hear one more, then we're gonna move the public comment to cease, yeah.
Back to the, the water testing.
Yes, um...
What, what, what do you have for a hard copy of that report?
It says on, in the paper that you can call here or come by here, and they'll make you a copy of that.
I came by and they said they didn't have it, that don't, when they have, when in the paper, and, and they thought that maybe the health department might have it, do you know?
Well, it, it should be a number on that, on the paper, that you can call, and you can get the copy from there. Or else, we should have it copied on file here. Because when we call the paper, they just CC everything up to the health department, they get it from the health department. Cause it come in a format where it can be printed in the paper, and they take it from there. Uh, we just get one copy and probably Mr. Holloway put that copy in his file. Yes, if you want to, I, let me look that, that up, and I'll see, and I get that copy for you. But yes, I want a passes every year. I mean, we, we go around to those locations, and sometimes, uh, if it's not, if those test tubes are not held properly, if they don't burn the faucets with the, with the torch, uh, if they let the bottle, tip of the bottle get contaminated when they drawing the water out of the faucet or something like that, there are a lot of parameters that can contaminate that. But that's just one sample, and then they call back, and they send them back, and you take an old sample, and you get the pass. But yes, the water's fine.
No, I'm just concerned by where I get a hard.
Oh, yeah, we can get you a hard copy of that, yeah, ain't no problem, because there's nothing on that hard copy that's, that's, uh, conflicted with anything else. Alright, we have vigilance session, and a vigilance session, purpose of vigilance session is for employees paid, uh, electric fixtures, okay? Thank you all.